Okay, we call a meeting and we're Lisa.
As required by the exact seventy five, that's what notices meetings provided on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by help of which the express times and hundred county Democrat. Was new said notice in this building on the same date. Mayor Varsany?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Here.
Mr. Kenick?
Here.
For the record, Mr. Kinnick is by zoo. Mr. McDermott? Here. Mr. Leverie?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here. They have the place. What do you like? We don't have to say. You know, which. The. To the series. Looking for a motion to Dr. Minister of the meeting from November seventeenth, which is the regular meeting and special meeting in November eighteenth. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second, anybody have any comments, additions, corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasures report in the interim bill list for December seventh, the twenty twenty two December bill list. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you want a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, anything? Roll call.
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Tax collector, tax and store reports for November twenty twenty two, I need a motion to accept. Anybody want to make it?
I'll make it.
Maybe one second. I'll second.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Bill, just jump in because you all kind of forgetting about you as I'm saying, looking around, I keep. Okay. Looking for a motion to accept the consent and Jennifer, the police department for November twenty twenty two DPW of November twenty twenty two township clerk report. Zone and code enforcement report, court report and ACL report for November twenty twenty two. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you want a second?
A second.
Any comments, questions?
I do have one comment and it was nice to two comments, actually. It was nice to see Jeff, the zoning officer. List what was done this month by the office. But on the ACL, and I'm not trying to split hairs or anything. She drove a cat all the way to Stroudsburg. Because the people who the place that had it microchip, the cat was from that facility. Even though the cat was found here.
Yeah.
Abandoned in Greenwich Township. If they want the cat from down here and get it, I don't know that we should be paying Nanda. To two and a half hours to. Drive us to this. I I'm just a little note on the subject matter.
I agree.
I I think that, you know, I'm all about what we have to do, but that's probably just. Need the permanent and we need.
Okay, Joe, I hate to hit you right away, but we're on your reports. Do you want to say anything or just we're accepting the way we're like that? By the way, with some. Okay. Lisa, did you want to say anything or add to your report?
No.
Roll call then.
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott, yes.
Committee reports slowly, do you have any?
I don't.
Brian?
Uh, recreation, we have a new appointment. Jonathan Knight, he would be replacing Jeff Peeny.
You can just do that a rework? Okay. What do you want to do tonight?
Actually, you want to do it tonight so he can vote then.
Okay. So. I'll make the appointment so that we raise a grade and then we'll make a motion to. I'll make the point, but is everybody okay with it? Did you make an emotion?
Yeah.
Maybe one second motion?
I'll second.
We just do it all favor in our area, all favor of pointing Jonathan Knight for the rec committee and say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations and welcome aboard. That it?
Bill, did you want to discuss the basketball pitch or do you want to? You want me to do it?
You can discuss it, but yeah, I I want to get that motion before the committee. So we can vote on it. And then if Shannon can give the clerk the P O number so that Jeremy can call the company tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so on. I I can't recall how much we even were approved. I know I had a motion that we.
Previously.
Previously. Um, but right now, we got the calls for next year. They did go up, it didn't go up that much, it wasn't significant. But there's two options right now for the basketball courts to finally finish them. So option one would be to apply acrylic cer- resurface. Apply a combination of color coding and tape and hand paint the lines. And that was fifteen thousand four hundred and option two is the one we're recommending from. Open space would be applied acrylic resurface, apply the combination color system. And do the entire port, not just the single port. And that and that's eighteen thousand five hundred.
And that was finished. Then we bought you seventeen five.
That's why I can't remember, I think it's a thousand more.
I think it was around seventeen.
I thought it was seventeen five. So I think it was, uh. I was looking too, I couldn't find it.
Okay.
But it's. We we would like to get this.
We'll make a motion.
Yeah, so I make a motion to use option two of the color coding. Entire port using Halcon. And the cost would be eighteen thousand five hundred.
Do you want a second?
I'll second it.
My only question is, does that add life to the?
Yeah, he says it seals it and it's actually it's a salt, it's supposedly softer too. So when you're running on it, you should feel it with the ball still bouncing.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott? Yes.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah. Thank you. You have any? Uh, no, I just want to. Little squad talk real quick. Um, again, it's fairly noticeable, particularly if you call the squad that. Greenwich isn't getting all their calls, which I told you, we were going to have a problem with the system and stuff. The county is reverting back to the system that was in place, so it should. Create less of a problem. Uh, we did recently have two people pass through the E M T process, so they'll be available. Um, and back in January, like I said, once January comes around, we're going back to an old program. So we don't have to try to race Phillipsburg every time to get to the polls. But with that being said, are the volunteer numbers on the squad are still exceptionally low? And it's not totally sustainable twenty four seven. So Phillipsburg still going to be around at our weak spots and things of that nature. But I do expect us to start to answer a few more of our polls come January again. But manpower and volunteer issue is just a monster issue. So.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah.
Last week.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, well, it turned out to be a a black Saturday, but we tried to do it on Black Friday, but the weather wasn't right. You know, the last thing we want to do is be standing out there on slippery wet road. Wouldn't limit it's like this.
Yeah.
So. Um, but we actually had a lot of fun doing it too, but we've done that for a few years in a row.
I don't know if the traffic has been used to be.
Well, that's exactly what we noticed.
I look at the.
Without.
Lots of they're not like the.
Yeah, no, without getting into the numbers. When we first started doing it, which was six, seven years ago. Um, in a four, five hour timeframe, you you would collect about a thousand dollars an hour. Well, we were up there for close to six and a half, seven hours this time. And the number was at four grand. And you could tell the traffic was was way off. Well, I mean, Black Friday specials are, you know, all month now and it's not. The lines at six A M are just not there now, you know, so that whole thing's changed. Um, but with that being said, that that's still a respectable fundraising period of time to to do that and stuff like that, so. And this is the most we've had, which is why we were able to spend that much time out there. Participation amongst our members is normally there's only four or five of us. And after four hours, you're whipped.
Yeah.
You know, so this time around, it was like nine of us, so we were able to spend more time out there.
Right.
Uh, you guys tried ShopRite?
Uh, we, uh, we we've done that before, but I other. Organizations kind of use that, so I don't want to go in there. And I just feel personally so bad for ShopRite. They are so generous and and I don't want to be jamming them up, you know, with us. You know, that's, you know, I there's other folks that can go in there and stuff like that. Um, but again, the traffic flow is not anywhere near that number, so. It's okay for both Sunday, but.
Yeah. That's when we used to do that.
The win.
Do it if you can do it, do it Super Bowl Sunday.
I mean, me personally, I still want to do the old fashioned sheet with the bullseye. But every time I bring it up, everybody laughs at me because they know, boy, you get a bucket because you get green things, you know, the one she only gets. And and I get jammed up all the time, but I always used to love that as a kid walking up there. You know, the car goes by, your parents give me a handful of quarters, you know, and the big toss. I think one seventy three would be perfect for it, but. It's not happening though. But that's it on this proud thing, so.
That it, anything else, yeah?
Nope.
Bill, you have anything in?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing, okay. Refresh the reports, Mike Finelli?
Okay, um, as you, I would suspect, no, Brickline Hill Road. Section two has been completed. Right now, we are only waiting for the pavement testing to be done and we can get the job closed out and get the final reimbursement monies from the state. Um, and right now. Um, and obviously, most of the the costs are are in. It looks like we will be under the grant amount and maybe be able to actually get some of our inspection fees reimbursed, so. You know. Looks like it worked out well. Keeping on the theme of the D O T grants, Beatty's Road, section two. I don't know if you saw, but very recently, a week or week and a half ago. The awards for the twenty twenty three program came out and we received another grant for Beatty's. In the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So, so as we talked last year, we held up. And I said, well, we'll try to split it up and maybe we can get two. Different grant awards, so that's what we have. We have one thirty, one six from the twenty twenty two grant and one twelve for forty from the twenty twenty three grant for a total of. Two hundred and fifty three thousand forty dollars. So again, I mean, it's December of twenty twenty two, we're not doing doing anything, making any decisions tonight, but that. That should just about cover all the costs for the whole road. Um, so.
From Old Church Road right down to.
Yep, 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 yep. No, it's good. If it had actually played out beautiful, the way way I had hoped and as I expressed to you guys last year or earlier this year. We'll prepare a memo, do a new cost estimate for the road of what we think the costs are going to be now. Since we have two hundred over two hundred and fifty K. Um, and see what the shortfall may or may not be. And then you do have to use the twenty twenty two grant this year. You obviously don't need to use the two hundred, the twenty twenty three grant. So let's wait till we put put our memo out and send that out to everybody for we can talk about a little more next month.
Well, I was gonna say, we're going to start our budget meeting, so it'd be best to know what our actual layout would be.
Well, let me just real quick. Because we we haven't actually produced a new memo with current costs. Last year, when we had a significant shortfall, we're only in one grand. We estimated two hundred on round ball, two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars to do the whole road. And we only had a hundred and thirty one six, so hence we didn't do anything. Now, I mean, the the estimate's going to be the same general ballpark order, order magnitude. And now we have two fifty. So now we're talking two sixty versus two fifty. Now, obviously, there's some soft costs as we know and whatnot, but I mean, we're we we're very close to being able to do the whole thing. So I'll give you, you know, the estimate like we're.
If you were to guess, we're going to need about twenty grand.
That's probably a good.
Good guess.
Yes, I would, yeah. You know, we're getting that, you know, that's a well over mile of road, so that that's that. That'd be, that'd be nice, that's a nice little job, so, okay. That's next month, month after. Lastly. Flood damage prevention ordinance. We've been going back and forth with the D O, uh, D, excuse me, the D E P. Uh, we got our final round of comments just recently. At least you've been getting copies of all those emails. So. We we are basically done and we incorporated the prior comments from the D E P. The ordinance needs to be adopted in February, so. We will be getting Lisa a a final copy of the ordinance for January for first reading. The second reading in February and get it adopted and we're done. So. That sound like plain Lisa, I mean, that's what I was saying, okay. Okay, that's it for me. Any questions?
Just one thing, Mayor, I I brought a resolution with me at. In October of twenty twenty one, we had passed the the committee had passed a resolution asking the planning board, the land use board, to take a look at certain properties to see if there should be put in an area in need of redevelopment. Land use board got a report from the planner in August of twenty twenty two. Um, which said that, yeah, these properties should they agree that it should be placed? So I just drafted a resolutions directly that it be deemed an area in need of redevelopment based upon that. And these are all those properties, those distressed properties on twenty two that you put that in. So I apologize for not getting to you sooner, I didn't get it to Lisa, but it basically, that's the next step. So we refer to the land use board, they do a review and the planners report and say, yeah, we think it meets the statutory criteria. And now we just passed this resolution deeming it to be an area in need of redevelopment. And then that starts the process. Anybody that wants to come in and redevelop it has to enter into, we pass an ordinance, they got to go to the land use board, but I know that the committee was eager to get that going.
And Mike, I don't know if you if you know, there there has been a lot of.
Oh, yeah, I've seen.
Okay, so you know, yeah.
Just adopt this a resolution.
What's the number?
We're going to name it number ninety five twenty two.
And Mayor, if you want, I could just read the title. The rest of it's just all statutory mumbo. Uh, resolution that the township of Greenwich County of Warren State of New Jersey determining that the property is located at fifteen hundred West Avenue, block thirty seven lot one. Fifteen oh one West Avenue, block twenty six point oh one lot one. Fifteen oh two, fifteen oh four, fifteen oh six and fifteen oh eight. Uh, West Avenue, block thirty eight lots one, two, three and four, Route twenty two, block twenty six, lot thirty four point oh one. West Avenue, block twenty six point oh on lot two. Thirteen eleven Route twenty two, which is block twenty six lot thirty seven, block twenty six lot thirty four. Thirteen oh five, thirteen oh seven and thirteen oh nine, Route twenty two, which is block twenty six lot, who owns twenty six lots, thirty nine, thirty eight, thirty seven oh one. Is an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment housing law. Uh, chapter seventy nine, N J S A thirty eight twelve, let's see. And then if the committee adopts that, then it goes down to the D C A because they have to approve it. And then we're off.
I make a motion we adopt the. Resolution ninety five twenty two. Under description that we already just read, do you want a second? Anybody have any questions, comments?
Just a a quick question. I I understand there's a lot of chatter, do we ever get to hear who's might be interested or, you know, do or do we have to wait? Is that something that could be discussed in public or, I mean, I don't, you know?
I think we actually have to wait until we either get an application. But I think what first we got to do is get the authorization of D C A, correct?
Right.
Yeah, we got to get this, we got to make sure it's approved by, uh, Community Affairs.
Okay.
First. Okay.
Sounds good.
I don't see any reason why they wouldn't approve it. Normally, they just want to make sure you're not putting farmland or something else in an area that really doesn't meet the criteria, so.
Then at at once that's done, and I think we're starting. I think John Grill started notifying us of who wants to come in and make presentations.
Okay.
That am I?
It's.
Anybody else have any, I missed anybody?
I do have no problem.
Yeah.
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
You see, yes.
Old business, anybody have any other old business? No, I do have. Oh.
No.
Okay. Um, I spoke to County Commissioner Lori Cecil a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. I was supposed to be a meeting Monday because they postponed it until January now. Uh, with the election with Senator Steinhardt. They're going to have a meeting about Trump problems here in the whole southern region. But one thing I want to do, Lisa, if you don't mind tomorrow, send out an email to Joe Mexi, Rich, or Mike Finelli, Mike Leverie. Ask them for any input they have. We have to get information to the county on what type of signs we want put up on county roads. What they specific, what we specifically want them to say. And I think Rich Hammer has the wording, or maybe you like and you and Rich had it.
Yeah.
It has to be worded a specific way for the state police to enforce it.
G V R has to be the.
Yeah. They the state police have been meeting with the county. They would, they're starting forcing the, uh. The weight restrictions once the sign proper science is put up. So I believe you helped prepare one time, listen where we wanted the signs, what.
That, well, that was specific to five nineteen, the Stryker's intersection.
Yeah, we. And Joe, maybe you and Rich can get together and figure out where the best locations are on South Main, Maple, North Main, all the roads and wherever we want it. I think definitely coming off of seventy eight at South Main, we got to have that really well marked. And I think. I'd like to see this would be state, but we're going to go through Senator Steinhardt with that. The stanchion's up on twenty one seventy three, when you come off of seventy eight east, you make it right on the opposite side, it has. Seventy eight east on west sides, this side is totally open to put a huge, no trucks. And I'd even like to put a like a flashing lights. There is coming off seventy eight and just turn it right like it's like it's the right way to go.
I like flashing lights up, uh, Main by fifty seven. I I spoke to Lori as well yesterday, she reached out to me.
Wish.
Fifty seven. And what you restricted, um, by the gas station.
Oh, oh, but I guess, oh, okay.
Yes, problem with the signage.
Make sure that includes the word on Bluesbury Road because you are aware.
And if there's a problem there. And Greenwood Street too as well, I think we. All of them.
The the big problem of like there on seven in both directions is. It says truck way restricted on County Route six thirty eight, it doesn't really say North Main. And the GPSs aren't showing six thirty eight, they're showing North Main. And that 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 sign is exceptionally small.
It's small.
And it's probably, well, it's actually about fifty yards off of. Uh, North Main in each direction, but it's small. You know, nobody's seen that at all. You know, and then all of a sudden they're on North Main and it says way restricted, but.
On seventy eight east when they get off, I know this, we should just put a sign up ourselves that says trucks, no right turn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, no, right, right. Well, there is a a sign that says trucks, no right turn.
Is it there yet?
Yeah, 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 no, it's a big problem. We had to get Senator Doherty to help get that put back up, but yeah, there is a sign there. So you can come out there and it says.
Yeah, I hardly ever get off these bound.
Yeah, no, there's a sign there.
Okay.
But it could use some more.
Yeah. Yeah.
The flashing lights is a good idea.
Yeah, even.
I mean, and I I explained that we're we're asking for a lot of science and, you know, science pollution.
Well, that's a problem too.
Science, we're going to look at forever, if we can resolve the problem after a couple of years, we're usually left.
Right.
You know, once the problem reduces, you can start eliminating your sign if they're to become unsightly. I mean, I I'm not big, I don't like a lot of signs either, but.
No, right, well, that's the big issue too. Has the chief been able to? Did the tickets now, his mandatory court appearance, has he started that?
No.
We have.
We couldn't do that because we have, it has to be done, changed by the state, I think we said, right?
I mean, it was on our roads, I think. He said, the chief said he could do it now because they could just check it off without.
All our roads.
Yeah, on our roads, it's a state road, that's right, you can't, on all the other ones you can't.
Can we do something with mandatory court appearance with overnight parking to illegal parking?
I think, and I don't want to speak for the chief, but I I think what he said was basically when they give out a ticket, they can.
Check off.
Check off mandatory court appearance for any charge.
Okay.
So.
Well, we can mandatory appearance usually is right in the statute, though, like speeding is like after twenty miles over, then.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I thought he said that we could require that on our roads, so we'll have.
Okay.
I've.
On our roads, but our.
Our roads, yeah, yeah, the other ones.
Yeah, that's that's.
Yeah.
It's the problem.
Parking we could do, though, the parking.
Right, if it's yours, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? Any other own business? How about new business, any new business? Okay, looking for a motion to adopt resolution ninety one twenty two refund of overpayment for police third party overtime. Resolution ninety three twenty two, what's the contribution to the newest full alliance? And ninety three twenty two refund of tax payment to veteran deduction. And resolution ninety four twenty two is a budget transfer resolution, anybody want to make a motion adopt this for resolutions?
I'll make the motion.
Do you want a second?
I'll second.
Any questions on them? Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we open public hearing on orders number one oh nine twenty twenty two. Uh, Lawrence submitting the chapter two dash seven title environmental commission, if anybody want a second of that motion?
Second.
Got anybody wishing to make any comments regarding the. Orders. Amendment, welcome, come up. I make a motion, we close the public hearing. Everybody want to have a fall in favor?
Aye.
We didn't need a roll call on that. Okay, I'll make a motion, we adopt orders one oh nine twenty twenty two, anybody want a second?
Second.
Lisa?
Okay, Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
Smith, yes.
I'm going to make a motion, we open. Uh, public hearing orders number one ten twenty twenty two, Lawrence amending and supplementing chapter twenty B entitled Open Space and Parks Committee Administration. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like that, anyone wishing to make any comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion, we close public, uh, public hearing on orders one ten twenty twenty two, anybody want a second?
Second.
Take the motion we adopt, we're at one ten twenty twenty two, anybody want a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Varsany?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beans?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
You Smith, yes.
School research, I don't think we have any updates on that, especially about the chief here, right?
No.
No, I haven't.
Yeah, I know he's still working on it, but. Okay, new facility update, Joe, you have anything?
Only thing that we had to hit today because of the weather with the architect. Um, looked like we got that meeting in the beginning of the new year because of the holidays. Uh, conversation with the engineer today, we're playing a little bit of volleyball back and forth with the county. On the review of the plan and they resubmitted the soil conservation. Questions that they that they needed answered and just waiting to hear all that. That they needed answered and just waiting to hear all that. And plus, we've been, Lisa can test this, I'm getting berated with. Emails from the architect, fine tuning wall colors, so forth and so on.
Anybody else have anything? Thanks, Joe. Okay, uh. Looking for a motion to appoint firefighters to the fire company, Dylan Brady, Jan C, Gus Kind, Jacob. How do you say?
Dellager.
Dell, Dellages?
Telephones.
Okay, I thought maybe the deed was signed with some, and, uh. To the auxiliary, Myra Alonso. All that proper backgrounds we've done on them, Joe, everything's.
Myra just put in, she has to put, go in for her background, firefighters are all clear and all.
Okay, she's for the auxiliary though, right, so. Okay, let me break it down. I look for a motion for, for Dylan, Jan and Jacob, I'll make the motion that they appoint the fire company. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Roll call Lisa.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott, yes.
I'm, I'm making a motion that Myra Alonso be appointed to the auxiliary pending the outcome of the background check by the chief of police. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, roll call Lisa?
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott, yes.
Okay, fire hydrants update, do you have anything on that?
No, they, I think they sent, I think they emailed Lisa asking, uh, when are we going to get paid? I don't know what they don't understand about. We're not paying you until you fix the fire, so.
Yeah.
They really said that?
Yeah.
And we said, and we've sent two letters saying we weren't.
They don't understand why we're in a rear.
And, and Joe, we gave them the, the list of the ones that weren't operational, so.
Yeah, they, they've been in touch with me twice, their new. Foreman or superintendent in the area, and he's told me, but he's never invited me out to go through and see what's going on. Just, just word of mouth of what he said they set people out. That's all.
Joe, there was some, there was somebody out in front of my house where that, that hydrant is, it was, it's an awkward truck. I don't know what they were doing, but, uh. They didn't spit out any water, but they were there for about fifteen, twenty minutes, so I don't know what they were doing.
They run your money.
You're the only one that you could get. Okay, so, but in all that, uh, correspondence, Lisa?
Uh, just what I, what I had at your, um, places tonight, there's not much.
Do we need to go in executive session for anything?
Oh, I wanted to bring something up.
Okay. Uh, I go to the, uh, I can go in, I only be ten, fifteen minutes, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion to go in executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Not second, all favor?
Aye.
Could be about fifteen minutes. Neither Finelli or Lee. I make a motion, we come out of executive session.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We emerge from our executive session at seven forty-six P M, where we discuss one personnel matter. Uh, no fish lack was taken, copies of these minutes will be, be available at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Okay, um, we don't have any action to take as a result of the executive, right?
Right.
But, but, so, um. That's it, I guess, right? Anybody have anything else?
Oh, we didn't open to the public.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
Usually we do that before we go into executive.
What's that?
Open to the public.
Oh, open to all the comment. I'll make a motion, we open up the comment.[1764.35]